It's always better.
Yeah, I had that real close relationship with the attorney in Indiana. He was pretty available. So, yeah, I'll definitely, I'll, I'll look at that.
Well, I tell, I'll do things on footage too. Make sure particularly if it gets some complicated issue. And sometimes there's kind of a collateral issue and something that maybe just reading it yourself, I'm not picking up on.
Mm-hmm.
Or a little background or something that you know that I don't know.
Yeah. All right, that's, that's a good idea. I'll, I'll send out like a regular meeting ahead and if the time don't work, proposal everyone will get worked out.
Yeah, yeah.
Especially with these all the changes, like this is one more good one. It's a light meeting so I can kind of feel comfortable before we get there.
Yeah, before we get into the heavy stuff. But yeah, we get into that, we're probably going to have numerous things to discuss. Sometimes on Thursdays I have prosecutions in court on Thursday mornings, but we're just, I'll know that ahead of time. Wednesday or something.
Mm-hmm.
Thursday afternoon. So we can. Yeah, keep that in mind.
I'll do it. I've, I've learned a lot from Pete. That's a good little guy for that.
Well, he's, he's done that kind of stuff.
Greg, I don't know if you're waiting for me, but I'm ready. Apologize for the delay there. Uh, we'll call this meeting on Thursday, July 20th. Regular session of the City of Kalamazoo Planning Commission to Order. Can we get a roll call?
Yes, Burgess, here. Chambers. Harrison. Milliken.
Here.
Patelco, here. Pitts. Swan.
Here.
D'Scenzo.
Here.
Curtis.
Here.
And a special welcome to Christine D'Scenzo and Mitchell Curtis. First meetings on our board, welcome. Thank you for helping fill out our vacancies and we look forward to your contributions. Thank you. Uh, we have before us a formal agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda this evening?
No changes.
Are there any, well, I guess seeing no changes, can we get a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Uh, second.
All right, motion by Swan, second by Burgess. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, we also got minutes from our June 1, 2023 regular meeting. Were there any questions or comments or concerns? Okay, seeing none, can I get a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Support.
All right, motion by Patelco, second by Burgess. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. Any communications and announcements?
I understand you, the planning commission was provided an email, um, from Judy Huxman. That was a communication. As far as announcements, as most of you, I'm sure, are already aware, the most recent version of the changes to the zoning ordinance, um, changes proposed to be coming later, was posted in June and we're still going through those last comments and, you know, taking in the additional feedback. And we intend to have the, um, next updated draft with the next planning commission meeting. And that meeting is going to be, you know, we're really going to be seeking the planning commission feedback on where we're at, um, try to get as much as the information because we intend to move it forward in September for a decision. And this-
So just to clarify, will there be a version 3.0 prior to August 3rd or would that be following August 3rd?
Um, prior or, prior or at August 3rd.
Okay, very good.
And lastly, in, since, um, the last meeting, at the last, um, committee of the whole meeting, Planner Anderson did prevent, present an update to the changes and the background, a lot of the same material we shared with the community, where we're at and the changes to the commission to help bring them up to speed. And that's it for announcements.
Okay, great. Then we'll move on to public hearings. As a reminder, uh, with, in terms of public comments, um, with the public hearing, we'll hear from the applicant and, well, we'll hear from staff, then we'll hear from the applicant, and then we'll invite, um, the public to come forward. We'll ask anyone to sign in at the podium and then, and you'll have three minutes to make your comments. And, um, after that, we'll take any comments from people watching online. Um, that phone number is 888-382-9556, 888-382-9556. So if you're watching online and you'd like to comment on the request, you can make that call and we'll take those comments then. If you'd like to make comments on non-agenda items, there will be a spot later on in the agenda for those. That same phone number will work then and we'll have time for folks in the audience for that as well. So with that, we'll do PC 2023.03, the request for a special use permit for a group daycare at 1108 North Church Street. Staff?
Thank you, Chair Milliken. So the request in front of you today is a special use permit request for a group daycare, as you mentioned. The property is 1108 North Church Street, which is a little more than half a mile, pretty much due north of us. Church Street would have connected to City Hall, but due to vacations over the years, it's gone now or you can't get directly there. So it's a single-family home in the RM36 Zone District. So a little bit of background, a home daycare is a daycare operated out of the home for one to six children, which is a permitted use in all residential zones. Um, the owner of the property, Ms. Jackie Fullerton operates it, um, the name is Ms. Jackie Daycare. And the application is for a group daycare. A group daycare in residential zones is a special use permit request. Um, that's when the intensity goes to the seven to 12 children capacity. It's part of the state licensing requirement. Um, before moving forward on those next steps, the applicant, um, needs to acquire zoning approval. So to go over items from the, the staff report, um, what you see there is an aerial photo of the property. And while it does show two properties, that's just because the map isn't up to date to a lot combination. Ms. Fullerton combined it and it's one large lot today and the address is 1108 North Church Street. The daycare operates Monday through Friday from 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM and there's no intention of changing the hours of operations or adding to the days. The property itself is about a third of an acre. The home is to the north. Um, the side yard, a portion of it is the, where all the play equipment is. In the photographs, you'll see the fence and I've talked to, uh, Ms. Fullerton about the fencing and the fencing referenced in the staff report, I understand, has, has since been installed. So, um, that, that was, um, something noted in before. As far as access to the property, there is a driveway on the north side of the property and it's, it's a gravel driveway. There's a big turnaround area in the back. So, so that's an option for, um, accessing the property. The road, it's got the two road frontages, so staff felt there was ample capacity and you could see the residential, uh, nature of the property. And to the east there, you'll see the, the Family Health Center, which is over by Rose and Patterson, if anyone needs a little more help locating where we're at. Um, this slide is the zone, zoning of the area. That entire residential area is RM36, which is a residential multifamily zone district, permits many different scales of residential uses. Looking at the surrounding land uses, you can see that there's a, a lot of residential properties, uh, a few small vacant parcels throughout and through the photographs. And you can see it's a very residential block made up of single-family homes. And then looking at the future land use map, consistent with the current zoning, um, there's nothing changing from what the future land use proposes. So residential long-term is the, uh, future land use plan here. Going to the daycare itself, um, you can see the outdoor play area there. One of the, the conditions of approval is a hundred square feet of play area for each children at maximum attendance. This is well over that, so there's plenty of room for the children to play. And the fence I referenced earlier, you can see there where it stops. Um, that has since been continued. And the view here is from the corner of Church, Church and Norway looking at the house itself. And the next photo here, we're standing in Church Street looking back. You can see the play area and the house itself over there. And it's, uh, both streets have very, very low traffic. And as I'm going to reference, um, in the conditions of approval, um, there is an item not met that the applicant has applied for a variance, which is, uh, this group daycare, one of the use requirements is that it has to be on a collector or a, a thoroughfare, um, as those are defined in, in the master plan. So from there, looking at the criteria that the planning commission weighs their decision on, here's the staff rationale, um, to recommend approval for with the condition that the ZBA grant a variance, um, of relief from that standard in regards to road type. The road type for Church in Norway would be called local street. Those are the lowest intensity streets in that road type. So one of the considerations and there's, you know, there's more details obviously in the staff report that the proposed use is appropriate for the location. So the house itself, it's got landscaping minus the big extra play equipment. It, it blends in very well with the neighborhood and staff is of the opinion that, uh, given the size of the lot, the play area doesn't, doesn't dominate the lot. Um, that the proposed special use complies with 4.2 U standards of the zoning ordinance. Those were all met, including the, the play area and that it has to look like a house first, not a, a business. Um, but it does not meet the use of being on a collector or teal roadway. Um, and one more thing to add to that, um, in those zoning changes that staff is presenting, daycares as a home occupation are spelled out in there. Um, this standard is not proposed to be continued on with those changes, which further adds to the, the staff support of, of, of that variance request, which is going to be at the August meeting. Um, that the location and design of the proposed minimize adverse effects, including visual impacts on adjacent lands. The structure is going to retain its residential character and there's no alterations proposed. There's no new driveways. The fencing was the only outside change. The proposed special use minimizes the environmental impacts and conforms to all relevant environmental standards. There's no collection of chemicals or any environmental impacts associated with the daycare use. And that there is adequate road capacity available to serve the special use. Um, the, there is sufficient road capacity. Both roads are very wide. There's, um, sidewalks on all intersections and plenty of room, um, if there was someone in the driveway for someone to do a curbside drop-off. And wrapping up the other half of the criteria that the proposed special use is designed to ensure safe ingress and egress to the site, there is the driveway and the large turnaround area in the back, um, that the, there is adequate potable water and wastewater, access to parks and emergency services to serve the special use. There are nearby parks and the residential structure does have water and sanitary connections. And that the site is designed so that access to the site is provided for police, fire, and EMS. Um, this house has a concrete walkway that leads directly to the door with no barriers, has the ample road frontage, the driveway, so them staff believes there's adequate access. And that, um, the proposed special use complies with the standards of Chapter 6, um, of the general development standards. Those could be things like landscaping, screening. Um, there are no additional ordinance standards from Chapter 6 required through this special use in this zone. And lastly, that the, uh, special use complies with all the standards imposed on it by all other applicable provisions of this ordinance. Um, and reviewing that information, the proposed use does meet all of those standards with, again, the exception of the street type that it's on. Um, and again, staff recommends approval, um, with, conditioned upon ZBA approval. And that concludes the presentation. Ms. Jackie Fullerton is here to speak on it as well. And if you have any questions for her or staff?
Great, thank you. Are there any clarifying questions for staff at this moment? No? All right. Well, thank you very much. Ms. Fullerton, if you'd like to share with us your plan, uh, or any, anything additional, we'd appreciate it. Uh, right up here would be great. Then we can hear you.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for taking time out with us. Um, my name is Jaclyn Fullerton and I do, um, on the, um, the daycare center and I'll call it Ms., Ms. Jackie. All the kids call me Gang Gang. So, um, I've been, um, doing daycare, um, licensed daycare for over a year now and I also been doing daycare for a long, long time. I have six daughters myself and I have 17 grandbabies. I got a host of nieces and nephew down through the years that I watched. I, um, decided to go back to, um, day, daycare because 2013, um, I was working at PNC Bank. Um, I went through some, some trouble, some hard times. My, um, my daughter was murdered on the north side of Kalamazoo and, um, it, it caused me a little, you know, a little distress and, um, so I needed, I needed a change. And so the bank, um, wasn't that for me, you know, I hadn't been more interested in, you know, working at the bank. So, um, I started, um, watching, um, my little nieces and nephew, grandnieces and grandnieces and nephews. So I've been, um, watching kids for a long, long time, 62 years old. And, um, it's a challenge. It also is a demand and, and especially in my area, I turned down so many kids, um, parents, um, because I don't have, you know, the capacity to, to watch, um, so many children at one time. So I, um, applied for a group daycare. So I had to come through to do zoning. And, um, I love what I do. I, um, I only, um, you know, I don't only just show the children, um, a loving environment, but I also try to, you know, help out with the learning aspect of children, especially those that will be going on to head start and, and to first grade or whatever. So, um, I just love what I, what I do. I do have proper and I was approved, you know, for one to six, um, children license. So I'm licensed now and I just want to be a help to the community. I want to be a help to parents that really, really need it. It's a great demand out here and, and, you know, and parents need to, you know, they need to work, uh, according to, you know, the scriptures I'm going to say. You don't work, you don't eat. So you need, if you need to, a job, you will need someone to help out with the kids. So that's me. I'm Gang Gang and I'm Ms. Jackie and thank you so much.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the applicant? No, you're all right. Oh, I think you're just getting your steps in back and forth. Okay, well, with that, we'll open the public hearing. Uh, is there anyone here in the public that would like to speak, uh, make any comments on this? All right. No one here in the audience. We'll give a moment, see if Bobby finds anyone online.
Hello? Hello?
Good, good evening caller. I'm sorry, I didn't have the microphone on. Um, you are on with the City of Kalamazoo Planning Commission. You may please state your comments.
Hi, my name is Tina. I live on Lake Street. I live next to the next last green space that you guys are destroying. Why is it not in your plan and the city board's plan or Imagine Kalamazoo to fix the issues we have in the neighborhood? Storm drains in Southtown neighborhood flood out the streets, leave standing water, river water for at least four days. Isn't this another health issue we have in the city of Kalamazoo? Because the Kalamazoo River overflow goes into the ponds and Axle Creek, floods the whole neighborhood out. And the Kalamazoo River has had a lot of sewage spells. And that is what comes in our street's health risk to residents. And the storm drains, storm sewers flood out all over the neighborhood. But yet you are allowing a developer who is on the NFP to destroy our last green space, Lake to Stockbridge, but not fixing any of the issues and things that are not working right properly. We've asked the city to fix these issues for six years now and we're still waiting. But yet the mayor is the president of Lift Foundation, works with Lockhart Management and known we have these, and knows we have these problems. We have a lot of protected species that live in that green space and a lot of wildlife that calls us their last home. No one has checked on the protected species, the bats, the red-tailed raven and other different animals that live there. You have let the developer on the NFP project change the NFP protection to destroy over a hundred trees and eight to 10 24-inch trees, mature trees to help absorb water in a natural watershed in a floodplain area. And you can't run the sewers on Stockbridge because they're not working right. But neither is the ones on Lake Street. They haven't worked for years. They have failed us over and over again. Why would you destroy that last green space and put apartments in a 55-car parking lot in a floodplain? Cheap land, free land, when you could build at 322 Stockbridge parking lot right across the street. Why do you have such a vendetta against us homeowners? Is it because we're in a poor neighborhood? Is it because we love this green space and we love the wildlife? Is it because we won't shut up? Because you keep making flooding worse and you won't fix the issues? But now you and your Imagine Kalamazoo plan will destroy our homes and put our homes under more water. I have lived in my home for 38 years. I never started flooding till you took the green space across the street. You took away 12 acres. Every neighborhood needs a green space, even poor neighborhoods, Greg. We all need them. You own the property. You work for Bronson. I know it's all, this is all connected together. And I know there's a lot of conflict of interest with these boards. You need to start listening to your residents, please. It's time to start caring about your residents of Kalamazoo. Thank you. Bye.
That appears to be the only comment.
All right. Thank you. That obviously was for public comments later and not related to the public hearing. But so we'll remember that for later. Um, and, uh, any other public comments? If not, we'll close the public hearing. Any other questions before we open it up for, or take a motion to open up discussion? If not, can I get a motion to recommend approval of the special use permit for the group daycare use with the condition of the ZBA approval granting relief for the standard related to street type?
Um, I move to recommend approval of the special use permit for the group daycare use with the condition of the zoning board of appeals granting relief from the standard related to the street type.
Excellent. Motion by D'Scenzo. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Swan. All right. Uh, we'll open it up for discussion on the motion.
Um, I think there's a, I'm glad to see that it meets all the criteria as described in the staff report and, um, know that there's a huge demand for childcare in the community and nationwide and, um, appreciate the applicant, um, doing the work.
Any other discussion on the motion? Yes, sir?
Uh, I would echo that and say, you know, clearly aligning with the vision of what, of, for the community and, uh, I want to thank Ms. Jackie for the service she provides in the neighborhood. Um, I enjoyed driving through the neighborhood today and it's, it's neat to see, uh, churches, school, healthcare, all, all nearby. And those speed bumps, very effective and useful. So, uh, but, uh, thank you for the service. It sounds like a appropriate use in, in all ways. Thank you. Given the, uh, exception, of course.
Any other, any other discussion? I'd echo, we meet the zoning ordinance requirements. I'm glad we have the condition in there for the variance. Um, and yeah, I think we've all covered it. So with that, seeing nothing further, can we get a roll call vote, please?
Burgess. Aye. Harrison. Oops, sorry. I think using that here. Uh, Milliken?
Yes.
Patelco?
Yes.
Swan?
Yes.
D'Scenzo?
Yes.
Curtis?
Yes.
All right, great. This passes. On to the ZBA. Congrats. All right. Um, no discussion action items, so, um, planner report, site plan list. Anything else to add, Bobby?
No, if there's any questions on any specific projects, I'd be glad to answer them.
Questions? Okay, uh, then we'll open it up to public comments. Are there any public comments on non-agenda items from the audience or, um, we'll give a minute for anyone listening online. Again, I believe the caller was, uh, probably more appropriately slated here. Technology.
Good evening caller. You are on with the City of Kalamazoo Planning Commission.
Yeah, this is Richard Stewart. I'm a resident of the city in the Southtown neighborhood and I'm calling in also on the Stockbridge properties. Um, I think the new members of this board need to know, we've, uh, as neighbors been fighting this, uh, plan and suggesting they pick alternate sites. There are many alternate sites available for this new construction. They continue, uh, Lift continues to push for this site and not consider other sites, uh, including a 54-car paved parking lot where our current last remaining green space, natural watershed, natural wildlife habitat sits. We feel we are not getting a fair shake at this. For the last six years, we have unanimously opposed it. Our most recent public meeting with the Lift Foundation at the Edison Neighborhood Association building resulted in 10 neighbors from the Southtown neighborhood met and unanimously 100% opposed the destruction of this site for this purpose. Previous board meetings with the city have told this developer in previous years, this is not the appropriate site, yet they push on. The mayor sits on the board of Lift. What is disturbing is the conflicts of interest. The Lift Foundation uses a exclusive Lockhart Management supervise all its properties. Alan Sylvester is one of the two owners of Lockhart Management and he was placed on the NFP board. Currently, the NFP board is under the review of the project to destroy our green space, which we got added to the NFP site. This just goes on and on. So we're asking that we put a hold on this. We have asked the DNR to require an environmental study to identify the bat population that exists since Lift refuses to do an environmental study. And we are attempting to map all of the existing trees because they don't want to do that. We're just asking that you consider putting a stop, take this off the agenda for now until the DNR can clear the site. The DNR has not cleared the site for this and we believe they're moving forward to simply clear the site of the- simply clear the site of the trees and wildlife for a plan that may or may not ever get approval by the DNR to squeak it through. These are the dirty tricks we have been fighting for six years. Thanks for your time.
Good evening, caller. You are on with the City of Kalamazoo Planning Commission.
Hi, it's Tina, Tina again. I'm a resident of Kalamazoo. Sorry, I called at the wrong time. I'm used to only having one time to call, and that's the only time you have to call. And you only have three minutes. I agree with everything that Richard says. We have been fighting this for six years now. We flood so bad. And the last green space they took away was to build KVCC growing field. They took away 12 acres. Now we flood two to three times every single year. We're trapped in our homes for four days. Can't get in, can't get out. The police station is even trapped. And Mr. Milligan, you know the hospital is even flooded out, the ER. No one does anything about this flooding. We flood constantly. I replace a furnace and a water heater every four years. I work two jobs. I am, I live in a poor neighborhood. I barely make ends meet. And you take this green space away, and you build three feet higher than that green space? Where's that water going to go but in my backyard, in all our backyards? It's just going to make us flood so much more. And what floods is the ponds overflow into the, the river overflows into the ponds. We all know the river has had tons of sewage spills. That water sets in the street. That water flows in Up John Park where kids play. Come on, guys, it's time to fix these issues. Please, build at the old DHS building. I don't care if you build apartments in the neighborhood, just don't make us flood anymore. KVCC promised us they wouldn't flood us out anymore. And we flood more ever since they took away that land. See, that green space has a swampy area. I have an engineer friend that has spoke at many meetings. He works for Kaiser, I think it is. He's, he spoke at many meetings. He did environmental checks of the water. It's contaminated. The soil's contaminated. All this water sets in our neighborhood. We have to wade through this water to get out, because we can't drive out. All we ask is, please, don't take our last little natural space away. Even poor neighborhoods need green spaces too. We love ours. There's so many other places you can build. There's so many animals that live there that call this their last home. This is a floodplain area. It's 60% wetland, has a natural watershed, has slopes to it, has 100 trees. There's eight to 10 24-inch trees that absorb a lot of water and help our homes with flooding. And when we flood, the sewer overflows. And they can't even put this fixed, they can't put the sewage to the apartments on Stockbridge because it's not working either. So now they're going to overflow ours even more. Please, consider another site for this building. I don't care if it's across the street at the DHS building. Save our homes and save our wildlife's home. Save our last green space. It's so important to us.
That appears to be the last caller.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Prado does not appear to be here. So we will move to planning commissioner comments. Any planning commissioner comments this evening?
I just wanted to say, I don't know who was listening in or watching or here when Christina was presenting a few weeks back, but we got a lot of comments. The information she presented is a lot of stuff we've seen before, but the public feedback was, I thought, very, very helpful. So if anyone hasn't seen that or wasn't watching live, I recommend they do that.
This is on the revised ordinance?
Yes.
Okay, good. Thank you. Other comments? Mitchell, Christine, welcome.
Thank you very much. Glad to be here.
Thanks.
Good. So just a couple things. Our next meeting is August 3rd. I will not be here. So you'll be in the trusted hands of Vice Chair Burgess. As was stated earlier, this will be a review of that edited zoning ordinance, whether it's version 2.0 or 3.0, or we kind of have a chance to review 2.0, but then we see what 3.0 looks like at the meeting. I guess we'll see over the course of the next couple of weeks. But it is not the official public hearing. Now, I fully expect the public will be here, and we'll take public comments, and we'll hear what that all is. But it, it's an important chance, and probably that, if it is, that last kind of chance for us to provide feedback and comments. So please, I have to be careful how I say that, because obviously in September, where there is the official public hearing, obviously, we can provide comments and feedback, et cetera, there. But I think, and again, I'm being careful how I'm saying this, there is an anticipation that, okay, we've been going through this now for like four months. Hopefully, by September, you've had a chance to say what you're going to say, we've heard what you're going to, we've heard you, we've incorporated any comments that are viable from us and in the public. We've got a document that we feel very solid about, staff, commission, together, and we're ready to pass that on. I think that's the hope. Obviously, if that's not there, if we're not satisfied with it, we need to make that known in September. But hopefully, we can make that known in August, I guess, is the hope from everyone. So then in September, that will be the public hearing. And again, if everything is, goes like it should, goes smoothly, staff will be looking to us to make a formal recommendation to the city commission, and then that document will go forward to the city commission. It certainly is not forced, it's not automatic. If there is something that comes up, either from the public, from comments we receive via emails, letters, or from our own review, that we're like, wait, we need to pump the brakes, we can still do that. But again, if everything goes smoothly, that's the process here. Any questions on all of that? Well, good. Well, and Mitchell, Christine, afterwards, I will give you my phone number and email address. So if you guys have like questions on like the zoning ordinance, or like what's happened from, you know, first step to, you know, we're sort of rounding second, heading towards third base here. So, you know, as those first couple steps, I'm happy to help you and catch you up or meet up with you, whatever you, whatever you need, so.
And I'll just add that Christina did give us a great orientation at the staff level. So we did get a little bit up to speed, but not four months worth. But we'll try to catch up.
And that's the beauty of these, these recorded meetings have their pros and cons, but the beauty of it is the ability to watch it and get caught up regardless of your presence. So I think we do a good job of that. All right, anything else? All right, well, with that, we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.